Good afternoon and welcome, I'd like to welcome everyone to our last meeting of June. Those of you sitting in the audience and also we've been watched live on our Electric City Television. Imocation tonight will lead us in invocation and respects to the flags be given by Council Member John Roberts. Please rise.
Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon our community. As always, we ask that you keep our citizens safe and away from harm, especially during this current heat wave that we're experiencing. And would ask that you especially look over the young people in our community and also the elderly to make sure that they are well hydrated and taken care of. As always, we ask for the blessings of the members of the Anderson City Team who is, who are on the front lines of our community and at times are put in the harm and we ask that you watch over these individuals. We also ask that you bless this council as we attempt to make wise decisions that affect our city and also our community. And finally, Father, we ask that you be with the families in Charleston, who, the nine families who have had to experience a horrific time in their lives and we ask that you continue to watch over them and bless them. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got a couple of things before we get into the meat of our agenda and first I want to ask Chief Horn to come up and we have a retirement. Chief?
Thank you Mayor and members of council. We do have one special recognition tonight. I would like to call up Tom Dunlap. Tom announced his retirement after 25 years and to give you a little history of Tom and his career, he came to the fire department September 11, 1988, promoted to engineer in 2000, sergeant 2007, lieutenant 2008, captain 2009, and battalion chief in 2010, or 2010, I'm sorry. A few of the things that Tom has achieved and different things that he's worked on since he's been at the fire department, he was the technical rescue team. We've been on a lot of calls together, rescue calls, certified adjunct instructor, we taught a lot together, investigator with the Anderson arson team, and certified state fire marshal. And during the last few years of his career, he received an associate's degree and a bachelor's degree. So he had a very good and fulfilling career with the fire department. He's going to really be missed and leave a tremendous void at the fire department. And Tom, I'd like to present you with this plaque from the city of Anderson for appreciation of 25 years of loyal and dedicated service to the city of Anderson. Congratulations.
I'd say anything. No, it's been a thank you city for hiring me back in 89. It's been a good 25 years. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations and good luck, Tom. Best wishes.
Twenty-five years of flyby. Very good. Thank you. We also have a special presentation from the American Heart Association. I'm going to ask Brandy Waters to come and lead us through this part of our presentation.
I'm actually just going to turn it over to Meredith. Hi, I'm Meredith Bose with the American Heart Association here in the upstate. The director of development for the Heart Walk and we are so excited that the city of Anderson is at the gold level for fit friendly. That means that y'all have a great wellness program, wellness for your employees. But thanks to Brandy for coordinating everything and we have a lovely plaque for you, so we look forward to adding multiple years to your achievement.
Thank you.
We certainly couldn't do it without city manager support and the council support to keep this, you know, a fit friendly workplace. So thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The minutes of our June 8th meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Now, in here, any do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
First by Mr. Buck Roberts.
Second.
Second by Mr. Don Chapman. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, the minutes of June 8th passed unanimously. We have three items of old business and the first item is request a second and third reading of ordinance 15-09 to annex and rezone 1212 Reed Road to our 20 single-family residential. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor, just to remind everyone that you gave first reading this matter at your June 8th meeting. The applicant is Concord Baptist Church. This was a single-family home that was demolished some years ago and their intention is to develop this for additional parking for their facilities. So we would recommend this to you on second and third reading.
Thank you. Do we have anybody approach us after the first reading?
No, sir.
Great.
Make a motion, we accept it on second.
First by Mr. Chapman, second by Mr. John Roberts. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that passes unanimously on the second reading.
Make a motion, we pass it on the third and final reading.
First by Buck Roberts.
Second.
Second by John Roberts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously on the third and the final reading. Our next item is request second and third reading of ordinance 1508, amending the 2014-2015 budget.
Again, Mr. Mayor, you gave first reading this amendment on June 8th and what it is is the last quarters worth of expenditures that were not reflected in the original budget, such things as the Anderson County Transportation Committee's funding of Robertson Creighton Streets repaving, police tasers, some additional HVAC systems for City Hall and detention and other detention equipment. Most of these should have come before you and I believe they all did, so again, we would recommend this on second and third reading.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from council?
Make a motion, we accept it as presented for second reading.
First by Mr. Chapman, second by Mr. Buck Roberts. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes four to one. I would entertain a motion on third and final reading.
No move.
First by Mr. Chapman, second by Mr. Buck Roberts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes again on the third and final reading, four to one. Our last item of old business is a request second and third reading of ordinance 1507 adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2015-2016. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor and council, again, this is a budget for all funds, $57,887,166. You gave first reading to this budget ordinance on your June 8th meeting. We've had no changes. We believe the budget was pretty well worked out in three council work sessions plus a public session before the last meeting. So we'd recommend that you adopt the 2015-16 budget on second and third reading.
Thank you. And you are right, we've, we basically did a lot of work on this budget last year, making some fundamental changes on how we treat certain organizations in the business enterprise funds. And we spent a good bit of time doing budget sessions this year. Are there any other additional comments or questions from council?
Make a motion, we accept it.
We have a first by Mr. John Roberts.
Second.
Second by Mr. Buck Roberts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously on the second reading.
Make a motion, we accept it on the third and final.
First by Mr. Chapman.
Second.
Second by Mr. John Roberts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously on the third and final reading. We have a budget for the year 2015-2016. I want to thank number one Peggy and your team for doing an excellent job in presenting the financials. I know we don't have all the department heads in, Mr. Bell, Jeff, Waters, Maurice, but Chief, we definitely appreciate you guys acting as a team and not protecting turf and doing what's best for the organization. We appreciate that. We have four items of new business. On our first item of new business is request consideration of a referral to the planning commission, a petition to rezone 312 Kingsley Road, 1019 and 1021 East Orr Streets from R15 Single Family Residential to RM18 Multi-Family Residential and approximately 20 acres located at the northeastern corner of Old Williamson Road and Wildwood Drive from R10 Multi-Family Residential to R18 Multi-Family Residential. That was a mouthful. Mr. Moore?
It probably goes with the growth of Anderson University as most of you know, if you go through there, there's a tremendous amount of growth from Anderson University. What I would say is that this is a referral, so it just begins the public process and I know our staff has been working very closely with the Anderson University staff as they continue to develop their master plan. As we go through this process, we can share more with you about what they're doing, but again, to get this before the public, let them weigh in on these rezonings, we would recommend that you refer it to the planning commission.
Thank you, sir. Again, it's just a referral, it will come back to this council. I would entertain a motion.
No move.
First by Mr. Buck Roberts, second by Mr. John Roberts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously to the planning commission. Our second item is request consideration of an engineering contract for the West Franklin Area Waterline Improvement Projects. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Jeff Caldwell from our utilities division is here and if you have any detailed questions you can ask him, but in summary, back a year ago, we went through an RFQ process for engineering firms for two projects. Number one, you approved an engineering contract for the upgrade or expansions of your lift stations, so that's already done, your pump stations on your wastewater. What this is, this was a different engineering firm. The Halsey, McCormick, and Wallace were deemed to be qualified, they'd done a number of projects in the waterline area. So this would be what we call the West Franklin Area Water Improvements. And again, there's a description of all the streets, I don't know if I'll go through them all, but again, kind of West Franklin, West Reed, some of the bigger ones you'll recognize, Montague, Cathcart, Rose Hill, Cunningham, in that area. What this will be to do is to design, carry us through the bidding process and also the administration of whoever you award the contract to for construction. It'll be a variety of things, but the goals are to have the highest quality of water possible, to make sure we have, provide adequate water pressures, provide ample fire protection through those water pressures, give us the opportunity for economic development and prepare for future growth in those areas. So it is a budgeted project. The utilities committee did review this back in April, recommended proceeding with Halsey, McCormick, and Wallace, and so what we would recommend is that you approve the contract with them for $78,000 for this project.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Chapman?
Does any of this have to do with our, the EPA standards that they're placing on us or is that all of this?
No, good question, no. The EPA is all on the wastewater side.
Okay.
Right now, and so this is on the water side and this would be along the lines of the past year. Right now, you've already done the water lines in Hunter Henry area, we're still waiting on some sewer and stormwater over there, finished that project you've done. Prior to that, did some over in the Green Acres area, we've done several projects, Sullivan Hills, which is outside the city for your water customers. So some of those lines are very old, some of them are dead end lines, so it's just to make sure that all those issues are improved. We try to do two a year to make sure that that system in the ground is maintained.
You're good.
Anything else?
Make a motion, we accept it for general approval.
First by Mr. Chapman.
Aye.
Second by Mr. Buck Roberts. Jeff, what's the timeframe of?
We're looking around three months to design and get through that process. We'll move into construction, probably, or bidding about a month after that and then construction, we'll follow that.
Good. Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Our third item is request consideration of a capital improvement plan purchase. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This goes back to January when the finance committee met and part of the budget from a year ago was to put some sustainable means of replacing equipment. And you've done quite, we appreciate the job you've done. Just to refresh your memory, in February, you approved five new police cars for $117,000. Then back in March, you authorized $1,495,000. A lot of that was work trucks and those kind of things, but the main thing was four new garbage trucks. And we've done this in stages because some of the new revenue sources, you went to the enterprise funds, we wanted to make sure they generated the projected revenue and they have. And so the last piece for the fiscal year would be $109,500 from the general fund. There are also a couple of other requests in here, $36,947 from the hospitality fund and then $54,000, some odd, from water and $30,000 from sewer. The total is $227,000 for all the vehicles and equipment. If you don't mind, I would like to take just a second. Kerry's here from Public Works, so he can address anything that's coming offline that you may have a question about. We've tried to detail some of those, anything you might be purchasing. Very quickly, for the police, animal control in particular, we'd like a half-ton Ford F-150 pickup truck, $22,682 from Bailey, Vic Bailey, the state contract, replaced the 202 with 160,000 miles. Signs and signals, this is a Ford F-150, one ton. It also is, has a utility body specific for signals and signs, $29,235. Dick Smith is the state contract for that one. For those of you who call us about mowing the right of ways for the street, one of the most important pieces we have is a mid-sized Ford tractor with a flail mower to mow those right of ways, $33,160. That is also Vic Bailey state contract. The fourth piece is an option for the business license inspector. The staff recommended the 2015 Chevrolet Silverado 1500, half-ton 4x2 regular cab, flex fuel, state contracts, Love, $19,711. You did express an interest in looking at hybrid passenger cars. The staff did evaluate those and listed the options, maybe if you want to look at a Toyota 2015, that is $21,479 and the Prius was $19,691. If I could wrap up real quick for recreation, this would be the hospitality fund. All those previously with the general fund is a new all-terrain litter vacuum for our parking garage, our downtown, we're currently contracting that out. You can see the bids, we've talked to other people like Ann Med that use these pieces. The low bid is from a tenant, sales and service, $36,947. And then if we move to the water fund, again, replacing a 2002 Chevy Tahoe, half-ton, we recommend a half-ton 4x4 crew cab, $30,00338. It's a Chevrolet from Love Chevrolet state contract. And the last two would be wastewater, basically the same vehicle as the one above and then for also another water, three-quarter ton service truck, $24,639 from Dick Smith. So really, all of these are state contracts unless you wanted to look at the options for the business license and those are not under state contract, but we've tried to get some local bids.
Thank you. Any?
Wrap up all the capital, the finance committee and all of these that were budgeted. Again, we took them a little of time just to make sure that the revenue was coming in as projected.
For this fiscal year?
Yes, sir.
And the revenue is coming in?
Yes, sir. And...
As projected. Any, Ms. Curvin?
I have a question about the recreation, the litter vacuum, I think you call it. If we're contracting that out now, what, I mean, would that contract go away or will be modified to eliminate that part of it?
We would do away with the independent contract and bring the service in-house.
And what is the cost of the contract now?
Bobby, can you do that for me?
And the second part of my question is, who's going to operate this equipment or are we going to have additional employees required to do it?
The contract is about $8,000 for downtown, especially during leaf season, those kind of things, and then about $2,000 a year for the parking garage to clean that. We can run this in-house, we went down to Columbia, saw the unit. It's a small kind of golf cart size piece of equipment that has a piece on the front that picks up and also has a blower that you can actually pick up and get along the curbs and stuff like that. The issue that we have with a contract, especially in downtown, is that we do it early in the morning and if it rains, we're sort of canceled. He's got another job, so we can't depend on him. He's got a certain time, he can do it. With us bringing it in-house, we can do it anytime. If it dries up later that day, we can do it that afternoon kind of thing. So the issue is especially, and that's just in downtown, he'll get a parking lot from here and there, that's extra, but mainly downtown, he comes once a week, especially during leaf season.
Look, if we take the $10,000 you were going to save and pay for this equipment over three years or whatever, four years?
Basically, that's what'll happen.
That money won't be squandered on something else.
Yes, sir. We will divert from, it pays for itself in ten, three years, basically where we looked at it. So yes, it'll come out of operating and go to the capital.
It's going to be specifically, it will be transferred over to the capital fund each year?
Yes, sir. Instead of being operated and go to other capital equipment.
Is it quiet? Quieter?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Lend a piece of knee for blowers and Billy Goats and those kind of things.
Thank you. Mr. Chapman?
I think myself along with Councilman Stewart had suggested that we look at hybrid vehicles because the vehicle that we were looking at was to be more of a point A to point B, not a vehicle that would require hauling things or it's just hauling a person to point A to point B. And with that, I guess because of the mileage, I know Councilman Stewart as well as myself have a Prius that we utilize for our office for same type process and that gets 51 miles to the gallon, the Camry gets 43 and I think the truck gets 20-something. But there's definitely a cost savings from the, from just a fuel standpoint alone and, you know, originally I came in thinking that we need to stick with the hybrid Prius because that is the most equal to the price of the truck, but it also saves $1,000, $1,200 a year just in fuel for the same process. Plus it's easier to maintain, there's a variety of things, but I had said that I'd switch it back to the Camry, but the Camry's another $2,000 more, so it would take two years to pay for the difference in fuel. So I'd like to switch that one and try the Prius for the first time. I know the state uses it as their contract because I think the state has a slew of them for this very reason. It gets 51 miles to the gallon and with that, I'd like to switch number four to the Prius through Toyota Greendale.
So noted. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, if your motion would be to approve all the purchases with the exception of the Prius, then we'll move forward.
Thank you.
Time to make a motion to approve the purchases?
With the?
With the Prius as Mr. Chapman has noted.
So we have first by Mr. Roberts, John Roberts.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
I could say, I think it's a good idea, especially in today's times. I appreciate what Mr. Chapman and Stewart proposed and the fuel savings. I know a lot of our equipment can't, obviously, the garbage trucks, whether they are or what they are, but wherever we can, I do ask and request, the division has, please do try to take a look into cost-saving, fuel-efficient vehicles, et cetera. So I think that's important, important to the future of all of us.
Good. I agree. Our last item of new business is request consideration of a development agreement with Homes of Hope. Mr. Moore?
Lynn McConnell will cover this matter for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council, the item that you heard just previously about the waterline, West Franklin Waterline Improvement Project has something to do with this particular issue as well. I'd also like to tell you that Don Oglesby with Homes of Hope, the president and CEO is with us tonight in case we have any additional questions. But the way this project started is Homes of Hope acquired the 15-acre site that we formerly knew as Earl Homes or Hanover Ridge and their development plan, subdivision plan for that property includes, it's called 61 Hills and it includes building 68 new housing units to be constructed on that site over the next three years. They've submitted their plans, gotten those plans approved and have actually started work on the site. So if you drive by there now, you would see that work is underway. The staff and the Neighborhoods and Housing Committee have reviewed a request by Homes of Hope for financial assistance to make this project more, I guess more, to make this project move forward faster and as being supportive of an economic development effort in that neighborhood. What, the way the staff reviewed this and the Neighborhoods and Housing Committee was to take this project in its entirety, look at all of the new fees, permits, any type of new revenue that was to be generated by this project and try to look at that over the three years. the three-year span of the development. And we've done this in similar fashion to our Economic Development Incentive Program. So this is modeled essentially after that. The new revenue, as I said, can consist of water tap fees, sewer tap fees, building permits, business licenses, and stormwater fees. Now, after the units are constructed, you will also have the additional revenue that would come in the form of the water and sewer monthly customer revenues and also your sanitation revenues. So we broke this down into the three-year timeframe. And in the first year, those new revenues would generate $38,740. In 2017, we estimate that those figures, same figures for fees, permits, and licensing would generate more than $43,000. And by that time, you would have people living in those new homes, generating more than $12,000. And in 2018, those revenues, same revenues would be $30,000 and $26,000. So in three years, you'd have new revenue of more than $150,000. Now, back to the West Franklin Street Waterline Improvements, we looked at, as you heard earlier tonight, it was on our master plan to do the waterline improvements in the West Franklin Street area. And we trying to do things like bolster the economic development by trying to coordinate our public improvements with the private sector making improvements there. We've accelerated this project so that our improvements will, by our estimates, be about $60,000 worth of waterline improvements that Homes of Hope would not have to spend on their own. We do think this certainly is a project that is beneficial to the city as a whole. It's definitely a sign of economic vitality for this neighborhood. And essentially, we would get our money back in this development agreement if we, instead of the $150,000 that Mr. Oglesby requested initially, we're proposing in the development agreement $105,000 because the balance of our contribution comes in the form of those waterline improvements. We include in the agreement the fact, just like your previous Economic Development Incentive Program agreements, we will never give out more in any given year than the revenue that we take in. So bear in mind that our numbers are based upon the estimates that we believe are, are accurate at this point, knowing Homes of Hope Development Plan and the track of building those in three phases. And we will have the ability to adjust the installment payments, if you will, based upon what's actually on the ground and what revenue has been generated and come into the coffers. So again, you give out what you're bringing in, and in year four, we'll have generated new revenue that will be ours to keep.
Thank you, Ms. McConnell. Now, we talked about this a good bit. Are there any comments or additional questions?
I understand.
Mr. Chapman?
I guess the, because I was, I was out of town when the meeting was occurred, but I just wanted to make sure that, that we were going to have the, the businesses that were going to be performing the work, we're actually going to be providing business license to each one of those. Those weren't going to be done through Homes for Hope or...
Every, everybody who is getting it, the, the, any builder, any subcontractor who is working on this site will have permits, will obtain permits for the, just like anybody else.
Permits and licenses.
Yes, permits and licenses.
Okay.
Ms. Curvin?
I just have a couple of comments on this. You know, I think obviously having, having affordable housing is a, is a good goal and important goal. The one thing about this approach, and just as clarification, if nothing else, the money that we will be giving out comes out of the General Fund.
That's correct.
And the money coming in, we will, we will have a, a enough coming in to cover the General Fund expenditure and a little bit more. And in addition to that, there'll be water, there'll be money going into the water and, and sewer funds. Is that correct?
There's not any money out of the General Fund in this case. Oh, well, and the license and permits.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, licenses and permits.
The fees, permits, and licensing adds up to about $112,000 over three years.
Yeah, but...
We're going to be paying out $105,000, so that's a plus, small plus, but a plus.
Yes.
In addition to that, we're going to generate revenue to the water system and to the sewer system, and maybe the stormwater system.
And stormwater and sanitation.
And that'll be on top of that. So that's, that's good, I think. That's a plus.
Correct.
You're going to do something this way. The one thing that I see that, that does concern me going forward in, in other projects, I think, is that, you know, this, this developer is a nonprofit organization, and I think there should be built into some agreement like this, some type of public safety fee that would be paid, since there'd be no taxes being paid. There should be some support for the police and fire protection and sanitation services that they will be receiving in these 61 homes.
And I, I should also point out that over time, it certainly is Homes of Hope desire and part of their plan that some of these homes will be come owner-occupied homes over time. So not all of them, but certainly some of them could be added to your tax base over time.
Over a long time.
Yes, it's over, over probably 15 years.
And it's, it's basically only police and fire because the trash, it would be billed through sanitation.
That's correct.
As we've since transferred.
Yes, through the sanitation fee, yes.
Any other comments, questions?
Do get the benefit of rehabbing the neighborhood too, though, so that's the other side of that.
Yep. That is true.
Well, I think that's, that's the justification for undertaking it.
I doubt.
And I really think this is sort of a, I don't know, I don't want to call it experimental, but it is a, something we really haven't done before, and it's, you know, may be, may turn out great, and may turn out we see some things that need to be fine-tuned going forward.
I agree.
Well, and the, the housing development that it's replacing will far exceed what was there and was problematic back then, so...
Absolutely.
With that, I would recommend general approval.
First by Mr. Chapman.
Second.
Second by Mr. John Roberts. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Again, I think I'll echo Council's sentiment that we look forward to working with Don and Oglesby and Homes of Hope. They have an excellent track record in the upstate, 500 homes and counting, and we hope to keep momentum going here in, in our city. Administrative briefing, Mr. Moore?
The only thing we have is the calendar, and it's pretty light, given that we're now in the middle of summer and a lot of people are on vacation, so we don't have a whole lot of, and the block party continues. And that's really pretty much it to... Oh, excuse me. Tonight's, last night, yep. Leave here and head to Shakespeare in the Park. We do have a couple items in executive session. Mr. Mayor, I do not expect any action to come out of that. The first one is to look at a piece of property for possible acquisition. The, the second one is a personnel matter, and that, as we've mentioned, that will be to discuss an employment agreement for your next city manager.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, before we go in, I just wanted to make a comment about the, the block party this past Saturday. It was the largest ever. It was 16...
Car show.
The car, I'm sorry. What did I say? The, the Father's Day, or day before Father's Day car show, it was 220 preregistered. There was about 240 cars, I think, total when it was all said and done, but it was the largest after 16 years. So compliments to the Main Street program.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session. First by Mr. John Roberts.
Let's call our...
Buck Roberts.
Audience, second.
Second by?
If you leave the lobby, they'll call you back.
Mr. Chapman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll stay in executive session. I would entertain a motion to come out of executive session. First by Mr. Buck Roberts.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. All those in favor say aye. Opposed. We're at executive session. In executive session, we heard a, a summary of a possible property acquisition by the city attorney. Direction with, with the city attorney was to, to stay involved and relevant in the conversation in regards to the property acquisition. We also heard a personnel issue in regards to the city manager with Ms. McConnell's contract, city manager. Documents, information was presented to council, documents given, and it just starts the, the process for council to go forward with completing Ms. McConnell's contract. No action taken on either one of these items. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. First by Buck Roberts, second by John Roberts. All those in favor say aye. Opposed. Meeting stands adjourned.
Thank you.